Twenty seven, twelve and city council, council meeting. First thing our agenda tonight is public comment. And public comment is an opportunity for anyone to address the council regarding an item that is not on tonight's agenda. We ask that you limit those comments to about three minutes. If there's anyone in the meeting in Zoom land here or at the poll center who would like to address the council, this is the appropriate time. So where one gentleman who wants to speak?
Mayor, this is Bates at the poll center. We do not have anyone present at the poll center, but we do have Western Oregon Dispensary here to speak.
All right.
Evening, Mayor and councilors. This is Anthony Stewart, I represent Western Oregon Dispensary. I'm sorry, I can't be in front of you there today, or at least in, in, in person. But Mayor, it's glad to see you. It's great to see you in the outdoors here. That's a great Zoom background. I simply wanted to follow up. I know I spoke to you guys about two months ago. And I know that we had talked about the community organizations providing their input sometime toward the later in the fall. Given, given the circumstances, we'd really like the council in one of its upcoming sessions to address this a little bit sooner. The Western Oregon has, has indicated to me that if we don't get some movement on this before we get the CIOs involved, that we're going to go down the process of notifying the DOR as I described in my prior letter. We don't want to do that because I think it ultimately distracts the city council from the reasonable opportunity here to amend the development ordinances. So that we can more, excuse me, so that the parties can work together and, and come up with a more coherent long-term plan. Where I'm available by email as always. I appreciate your time and attention. I understand that there are a lot of things on your plates and you guys are doing a, a yeoman's job of undertaking them, but we would really appreciate your attention in the coming month or so. To this matter, before the CIOs get involved. I don't think that your action is necessitates their involvement on the front side. I think that the team, the city staff can work together and hopefully have some more clarification before we get to the fall time.
Thank you. Thank you all very much. All right. Is there anyone else who would like to provide some public comment?
Here, the only person I haven't heard from is Ben Nickel, who has joined us.
All right.
I'm a Boy Scout and I'm attending the city council for a requirement. So I'm just listening in.
Thanks for joining us.
Hi, Ben. Thank you for being here.
All right. Okay, so move us on to the consent agenda. Tonight's consent agenda. Our items are considered routine and will be adopted by one motion unless someone in the council would like one of them removed and heard separately later tonight. Tonight's consent agenda consists of item number one. Consideration approval of the city council regular meeting minutes of June twenty second, twenty twenty, and a work session in regular meeting minutes of July thirteenth, twenty twenty. Item number two, consideration approval of a change in liquor license application for PF Chang's China Bistro. And item number three, consideration of resolution number five, five, one, two, dash twenty, a resolution amending resolution number five, five, zero, five, dash twenty to amend utility fees for hydrant and bulk water usage charges. Is there any item that someone on council would like to have removed? I think Maria's cat is getting involved. All right.
Um, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agendas red.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to approve the consent agenda as read. I'll roll through the screen here. Councilor Brooks.
Hi.
Council Morrison.
Yes.
Council Reyes.
Yes.
Council Kellogg. Uh, Council Pratt.
Hi.
Council President Grimes.
Hi.
I vote aye also. All right. Next up are, is a special report from ODOT. We're going to look at ODOT depart, ODOT, Oregon Department of Transportation's presentation on I five and I two oh five tolling. ODOT here.
Um, I believe Heather Wells is from ODOT. Heather, are you? There we are.
Yeah, yeah, I am. Um, Lucinda is supposed to be leading the presentation and she's not quite on yet. Let me text her and see when she's going to come on.
Uh, she's joining.
She, oh, there she is. Yay. Hi, Lucinda.
Hi, how are you?
Welcome back, Lucinda.
Thanks.
You're up.
Okay, let me share the screen really quick.
Got it. Good, Heather. So, good evening. Thank you again for allowing us to come back and give you some updates about what's going on in the toll program. I'm just gonna kind of roll through the updates, talk about the NEPA and where we are on I two oh five. We're gonna have Heather and Matt here are here from WSP, Heather Wells and Matt Delada. Matt's gonna get into more of the analysis. So I'll make sure that we leave time for all the questions. Go ahead. Go ahead. So just kind of project updates. I think last time we, we were here, we probably had not gone to the Region One Area Commission yet. But we've been out and about talking about upcoming things for toll program. And one of those things was that NEPA was going to start on I two oh five. So we've done some outreach. We've actually been getting all the comments. You'll see how we roll those up to the purpose and need statement and what's coming next. We have an Equity and Mobility Advisory Committee meeting tomorrow, starting at three thirty. And that will run through the whole NEPA process for both I two oh five and I five. So it's kind of interesting. No place in the country kind of has this equity overlay on their toll program. So we are the first. So it'll be very interesting to see what we come out with. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I, this is Nancy. I apologize for interrupting you, but I was wondering if you could, um, call out the NEPA.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. National Environmental Policy Act.
Thank you.
Okay, not a problem. I can do that. Sorry about that. So we'll be talking about that environmental analysis that we'll be doing, starting this summer. Um, you want to go to the next one? Because we'll get more into those. So as I was saying, the Equity and Mobility Advisory Committee, we convened that in, in May. And they will have their first official meeting. They've met a few times. Last time was a listening session, which was really good. You can see from the little comment bubbles there about what the questions were. Thought it was really good. Talked about what was going on, not only locally, but nationally and the environment that we're in. And then tomorrow will be their first real meeting where they'll start to receive some project information. I'm gonna go to the next slide, please. We did a data share on July second with our regional modeling group. And we had kind of a time share meeting where we sat down and talked about, here's the data and here's how, here's the modeling we used for it and here's what we came out with. I thought it went really well. We've sat down with the Clackamas County Diversion Technical Committee to discuss what the data was and any questions. And we're willing to continue to do that as we go forward. And we'll continue to exchange. It's, it's like, give us information, we'll use it and then we'll come back. So I think it was working really well. Actually, it's a great sharing time. Next one. So I think, I'm not sure if we had this slide last time, but it's what we've heard. And I think the slide is what it's trying to do is represent not only what we hear, but what we do with what we hear. And to make sure that we're not only just taking the comments or the questions, but that we're moving them along and we're actually trying to answer the questions. And the last three are usually, let me see if they're in the same order anymore. They're not. It's actually, uh, four, five and six are usually the ones I highlight. And we have further slides on, talk about how can tolls be equitable? We do have the Equity and Mobility Advisory Committee. We also have an equity team who are professional folks who do equity. Our equity and advisory committee are out in the communities. Either they have lived or they're professionals doing it. So we're, we're getting information in and then how it comes back out are recommendations from the Equity and Mobility Advisory Commission Committee to the commission. And then we'll see how we overlay that on tolls. The other one was Clackamas County Transit. I think we've changed this bullet a few times. Every meeting, someone asked us to change a word or two. But basically, I think we're trying to get down to the gist of it, which is a transit service issue for an alternative to tolls. We do have a transit committee that meets also. It's a transit multimodal committee that's talking about transit in Clackamas County, what that looks like. So we, we are addressing that. And then the last one is diversion and, sorry about that. The last one is diversion, that, that one before the last one, which Matt will talk about some tonight for some of the alternatives and what we found through the analysis. Next slide. Upcoming. So, starting August third, which is Monday, we will start the forty-five day comment period for the National Environmental Policy Act. And what we're looking at is the alternatives. There are five alternatives. Matt will dive deeper into those and with the analysis. But I think what we have, I, I want to make sure that we're expressing is that it's a comment period. And we're trying to get out everywhere we can to let folks know that it's going to be open. We want to receive the comments. So if you know any, you know, now during COVID and these times, it's not the same as going out to the, the county fair or any of your community engagement, things that are going on for the community. Now it's all virtual. So if you know of any other virtual ways we can do it, or I, I'm just looking for any other ways that we can reach people since we will not be out on foot and in person. Do you want to go back, go to the next? So our stakeholder engagement, as I was saying, we can use, you know, more examples to help us out. We're doing an online open house with a survey. We'll be doing some webinars. We have flyers and fact sheets. We'll be coming around, talking to folks. We're doing meetings. We also have our community engagement liaisons and they'll be out talking to people. It's almost like their own sphere of influence in their own languages. So that's another way that we're trying to reach people. We are also stakeholder interviews. Just trying to figure out how to get more people involved in what we're doing. So we have a full, it's kind of the full breadth of what it is that we are sharing with everybody and that they're giving us their information back. Want to go to the next one? Um, I think I, I kind of talked a little bit about feedback loops and those, those comments that we had received in the three I highlighted, it's kind of where that's coming from. So we do receive the comments and I think people want to know what we do with them. Are they moving? So we are trying to show that it, I, this is trying to depict that comments do come in and then what we do with them to make sure that they get addressed. And then we're going to put them, I'm believing in our e-newsletter, we're trying to figure out the best place so everybody can see. Here are the comments and here's what we did with them. And it's probably going to be in our monthly e-newsletter where you can see, here's the comments and then what happened to them. So feedback loop is, is the thing we're working on right now. Very important to the project. Next slide, please. Here are the milestones we're talking about. So the orange is, is that start. And that's where we'll be on August third. We'll start the National Environmental Policy Act comment period for the alternatives. There are five alternatives and we are trying to get down to two or three to take into the process, into the environmental analysis work. So you'll see the five that Matt will show you and he'll also give you the ones that were recommended. I'm gonna go to the next one. Oh, Heather.
Thanks, Lucinda. Can everyone hear me? Okay, I see the heads nodding. So I'm gonna just take a little bit of time and go over the purpose and need and goals and objectives, which are part of the environmental assessment process and under the National Environmental Policy Act. So what is a purpose and need statement? We hear a lot about these in environmental assessments and environmental impact statements. But it's essentially just a really concise statement of what the transportation problem is or the challenge that we're trying to address. It's really the foundation for how we determine the alternatives. So if an alternative does not meet the purpose and need, then it would, can be eliminated, dismissed from further consideration. So it's really a pass fail test. And so all alternatives that move into the environmental assessment have to meet the purpose and need. Goals and objectives are really important as well. They accompany the purpose and need. And these are the desirable outcomes outs of the project beyond that purpose and need. So we typically keep that purpose and need statement very concise and it's very much around the transportation issues. And then the goals and objectives are much broader. That's where you see things like equity, sustainability and a lot of that stuff. So I'm going to go over some of the goals and objectives that we have for the I two oh five toll project. So our purpose, and this is what is going, what is out, what will be out on August third for public comment. We'll be asking for folks to give us comment on the project purpose and need as well as goals and objectives. And so it's, this hasn't changed. I think you've seen a version of this slide before. It's to manage congestion as well as raise revenue to fund congestion relief projects. So on the project need, there were comments that we received. So we had preliminary coordination and collaboration with the partner agencies. We asked for comment on the purpose and need statement early before we, before we were going to put it out for public comment. And so the things in blue are things we added based on the comments we received from the different groups that Lucinda was talking about, including the regional modeling group, transit multimodal group, et cetera. So we added a need around the greenhouse gas emissions and reduction of greenhouse gas emissions. And just referencing the governor's executive order. And the goals and objectives, these are the high level bullet points of the goals and objectives. You should have a document that has the full text of what these are. It was, should have gone, I think it went out with all the materials for tonight. But again, those in blue are things that we added based on comments from the, the different groups and our partner agencies. So we added, you can see that this is where all the equity goals and objectives are going to go. And then there will be performance measures derived from these goals and objectives. So we did add quite a few based on the comments that we received. So some of the next steps in the environmental review process, as Lucinda said, there's a forty-five day comment period. We're asking for comments on the purpose and need range of alternatives and also the issues to be studied in the, in the NEPA process. We'll be inviting participating agencies and the city of Walton is on that list. So that would be a formal invitation from Federal Highway Administration to participate in the NEPA process on a more formal level where you're, we're ask you to comment on really specific things in the NEPA process, including things like the methodologies, which is how we are going to assess the impacts in the NEPA process. And that's it for me.
Okay, welcome everybody. I'm Matt Delada. I'm gonna run through the I two oh five screening alternatives and analysis results. Some of the technical analysis we've done so far. So just to give an overview of where we're at in the overall process. We're really working, building on the work of the value pricing feasibility analysis. That was the region-wide study that looked at tolling on I five and I two oh five. And from that came something called Concept E, which was a toll on the Abernathy Bridge on I two oh five. The finding of that was that that can manage traffic and generate revenue on I two oh five. At this point, we're screening the alternatives that would go forward into environmental review. So we have five alternatives. I'll run through those. We're doing kind of a higher level analysis using metros, relying heavily on metros, regional travel demand model, looking at twenty twenty seven. Then when we get into the environmental review, the NEPA study, like Lucinda said, we hope to have two or three alternatives from more detailed study. And that's where we really get into the details of what are the impacts of each of all these alternatives? What are the mitigations needed? Or we refine our tools and kind of get into the nitty gritty of it. And finally, at the end of the process, we should have a preferred alternative where we kind of can refine the projects and identify all the impacts and any needed maybe mitigations. So we have five alternatives. So the first one again is building on the value pricing feasibility analysis. That's just a toll on the Abernathy Bridge. It's easy to understand. But it has limited availability to manage traffic beyond that piece of corridor and increase the concentrated rerouting impact through Oregon City. The second alternative is really a variation of that that looks to limit through rerouting. Our third alternative kind of splits the toll between two different, so one on the Abernathy Bridge over the Lamont River and another one over the Walton River. So essentially a through trip would pay basically the same as any other alternative. But a local trip accessing somewhere in the middle could pay half the total toll. The fourth alternative really just extends that concept even further, splits the toll between four different locations. So if you use one segment, you pay a quarter of the amount if somebody was using all four segments. And our fifth and final alternative is a, is a zone tolling system where everybody pays the same amount regardless of how much they use. So that kind of benefits through trips a little more. So this is just a quick graphic. You guys have this in your packet of what this looks like. So our alternative one again is the, the point toll on the Abernathy Bridge. Alternative two, very similar. Alternative three splits the toll between the west and the east. The segment based tolling and alternative four is a toll and alternative five. So let me talk about how we assess those. So we identified some performance measures for this screening analysis at this stage. One of them is transportation system demand. So that's how many vehicle miles of travel we have on the network. And another is vehicle hours of travel. We also look at the total volume on I two oh five, the traffic volumes moving through. And we look at how diversion changes, where the, where the traffic diverts to, gets rerouted to, what kind of mode shifts we might have. And as well, we, we also look at cost and revenue and then some qualitative assessments about how tolling would, would implement and how it would operate and how it would scale to a future transportation system similar to what we identified in the value price feasibility analysis. So let me jump into some of our results. And again, we're relying here on the twenty twenty seven metro regional model. We are seeing diversion away from I two oh five, a decrease in volume on I two oh five. It depends, it varies depending on the segment you're looking at and which alternative you're looking at, but generally in the kind of twenty to forty percent range. A lot of this diversion is happening in the off-peak hours. There's, there's a much less of a percentage decrease during the peak hours than during the off-peak hours. There's also less of a percentage decrease when you move off of the told pieces of the corridor. So whereas we had twenty or forty percent in some of our told segments, you look immediately to the west between I five and Stafford and that decreases more like ten or twenty percent. You look to the north or east of the told corridor and it's more like five to ten percent. So that becomes an important part of the story when we look at rerouting at the regional scale. So diversion off of I two oh five. So where does this traffic go? That's, it's a lot of concern about that. So a piece of it is just rerouting to avoid the toll. There's a regional component to it. And then the local component to it, which we're defining as, as near the told area. There's also changes in travel behavior that happen. So that's transportation demand management. That means people changing when they travel, where they go. Excuse me. Or the mode they use. So the model results can tell us something about whether demand would change or not. So all of these scenarios show that there would be a decrease in single occupancy vehicles, people driving alone. But the, there's not a difference between the alternatives, but we do see consistently a shift from single occupancy vehicle to high occupancy vehicle. Essentially, more people are sharing rides as they travel over the course of the day. We also look at the shift to transit. Using the assumptions that we have in our, in the twenty twenty seven model, we can see a relatively small shift of fewer than five hundred people per day. That assumption could change if we modify the, the transit assumptions and provide more transit service potentially. But so far, our results would show, which include a consistent assumptions about transit operations across all scenarios, show a relatively small shift. What about vehicle demand on the network? So this is where we get into the vehicle miles traveled, the regional network and the vehicle hours traveled. So all of the alternatives show potential for reducing the vehicle miles traveled in the transportation system, the roadway network and a reduction of vehicle hours traveled. However, there is a shift evident away from freeways to non-freeways. This is showing during, so there's an increase in vehicle hours traveled on the non-freeway system. However, during peak hours, we do see potential for decreasing vehicle hours traveled. Includes a congestion component in both the freeways and the non-freeways. Important to keep in mind that overall, when we look at the regional network, it's a relatively small shift, less than one percent. But more locally, it can, can have some notable impacts and the rerouting can be significant. So I'm gonna jump into that piece a little bit later. Next slide. Okay, so I five, there's a logical first thought. You told I two oh five people are gonna jump over to that. We're not seeing a lot of that happening. We're actually seeing some reductions of travel on I five, near I two oh five. And then relatively modest increases further to the north, north of two. So that's zero to two percent or two, two to five percent. Again, less during the peak hours, the increases there tend to be pretty negligible when you have congestion on alternative routes. Next slide. Looking further out into the regional network and some of the other freeways. You know, again, same story, relatively small shifts at the regional scale, generally consistent across alternatives, zero to two percent, even less in the, in the peak hours. Next slide, please. Zooming in closer to the told area, we start to see some locations with some modest changes in downtown Lake Oswego, five to ten percent increase potentially. Relatively decreased is actually on Stafford Road. It's kind of fewer people look to access I two oh five. Yes, Stafford Road. Downtown Candy, that's where you kind of start to see an impact. We've seen consistently a potential for rerouting along ninety ninety. Next slide, please. Locally, getting closer to Walton now. We have Borland Road, east of Stafford, which shows some, some high potential for rerouting depending on the alternative. But just east of sixty-fifth Avenue on Borland Road, we don't really see much of potential for increase here. That's largely because the piece of I two oh five between I five and Stafford is, is not told. So we see relatively small shifts happening closer to Walton. And our model results are not really showing an increase in vehicle miles traveled overall in Walton or was enough. Next slide. Thank, so our rerouting analysis, we're progressing through the analysis, trying to provide more detail at each stage as we go. The feasibility analysis identified which routes were going to be potentially impacted. Now we've identified the potential scale of impacts, a key locations and how they vary over the course of the day. And the environmental assessment, that's really when we get into the nitty gritty and figure out, how does this impact key intersections during the peak hours? Does it cause any locations to be, exceed the mobility standards that get identified and does it worsen condition strength those key periods? Cost and revenue is a component of this. Just the, the main thing, the intent here is to keep kind of the net toll revenue overall relatively similar. We did end up with slightly higher revenue potential in alternatives three and four. For us, that really means there's more flexibility to manage traffic. Next slide, please. An important part of this, the features in our analysis is the qualitative component. So how can we manage traffic as, as demand changes over time? Are there any concentrated rerouting hotspots that are really going to be difficult to mitigate or manage? Does the system make sense to drivers? What are consumption, collection costs look like? And then also looking at that big picture for the region of the feasibility analysis identified. How can this concept, the structure be translated to a regional system potentially on I five or other regional freeways? So this is a high-level roll-up. We took all these categories, evaluation criteria that I talked about. And we compared the alternatives against each other to figure out which one does better. That's kind of the point of this exercise is can we do something that's better than the concept E that was identified in I two oh five? So we looked at each component. We compared the alternatives against each other and kind of said which ones worked well from each of these criteria. And all that leads to our recommendation. So we're at this point recommending to advance alternative three, which is the bridge, the two bridge tolls. And alternative four, the segment based tolling for further study in the NEPA analysis, the environmental. We are not recommending advancing alternatives one or two, the point tolls on the Abernathy Bridge or the zone-based tolling. Um, and we are recommending to refine these assumptions to continue to produce better regional outcomes. So the thinking behind this is really that um, alternative three seems to be performing better than alternative one. These both fit under kind of the same federal tolling program. Um, what alternative one kind of has a concentrated rerouting impact in Oregon City. We see less of that in alternative three and think it can work better. Alternative four, the segment based tolling offers uh the greatest flexibility and potential to uh manage traffic over the long term and it translates well to the overall system. That's kind of a broader geography of a um local rerouting impact. Uh, but it's, but it's not as concentrated on any one location. Whereas alternative five creates some, some local impacts near the outer ends of the the toll zone, including uh through Gladstone.
Unmute. Next slide. So what's next? Um, more, more meetings, um, more updates. More information coming out regarding the forty five day comment period. We want to make sure that we're out talking about it before it ends. Make sure people have enough time to participate um in our online open house, our webinars. We'll, we'll have three of those discussion groups. So really it's, it's just more information coming out. Next slide, please. Again, have your say. I, I like this slide actually. It's comment period starts August third in September sixteenth. Uh, we have the online open house. It has a survey. It'll be open during that whole time. The three webinars are there. And then any comments, if you just want to submit comments any other way, that's fine too. We'll take email, voicemail. So next slide, I think the next slide just says, here we all are and here's how to contact us. So any questions? We didn't mean to speed through it. We wanted to make sure that you heard all of Matt's analysis for sure.
All right. Questions? Wait for a picture to pop back up. Valerie, do you have your hand up? Right, Valerie?
Thank you. I guess I'll start it off as usual. Um, I, I'm wondering um, a couple of things, probably more on the spending side on alternative three, it's um to individually told multiple bridges to be rebuilt. So once these bridges are rebuilt, does this tolling end or does it continue? This is my first question.
So lem- I'll grab that, Matt. I'll grab that, Matt. Yes, okay. So tolls would be put on to pay for the construction of the bridges and then OTC would decide if the tolls would stay longer than that because there's still maintenance after that time.
Right, okay. And then um, my next question is um, on the um administration of collecting the tolls and all that, what is that typically? What percentage of the revenues is that? Um, I know it's, I mean generally, just.
Fifteen percent?
Okay.
Um, I think we sent a, we have a um, have a fact sheet about that, but I think we sent someplace else. I can send that to the group. I can, yeah, I'll go ahead and do that.
And then um, oh, on your purpose, and now I lost the page, but it said it's to um, reduce traffic on I two oh five, but um, so is the purpose of this just to reduce traffic on our, on I two oh five and not on the side, you know, alternative routes? It doesn't look like. Um, I'm kind of confused where, I don't see where this is really reducing traffic or am I just misunderstanding?
You want to go Heather?
Well, I was actually looking at Matt.
Yeah, I can speak, I can speak to that. So um, you know, the primary objective is focusing on it, I two oh five. Um, so there'll be a, a traffic uh reduction there. Um, but, but some of those results that we were that I presented kind of talked about the system as a whole. And so there's um, uh, there's a transportation demand component of ma- making sure that the overall system works better. So what we're seeing is that the overall vehicle hours traveled in the entire system generally works. So yes, there is rerouting onto the, the local system, but a big chunk of it happens in off peak periods when there isn't necessarily delay happening on the network. There's a congestion on some of these other side streets. And then during the, the peak hours, when you experience the most congestion, there's a lot less rerouting onto the local system.
And are, are you considering when you're looking at all of this, because this is obviously a long-term thing, are you looking at where potential growth and development of housing is in this region?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, at this point, we are looking at um twenty twenty seven for our scenarios. So we're not, not looking into the future, but not into the, very far into it so far. Um, but in the NEPA analysis, we'll look at twenty forty. And so in the twenty forty, uh, the metro regional travel demand model uh makes assumptions about re- growth in the region and housing and employment. And that's all wrapped into um, the scenarios that we run and, and our analysis.
All right. And then my last question is what does WSP stand for? I see that after your names.
You got me.
I know you got me. It, it, it's just the name of our company and I have yet to figure out what they actually stand for.
These are the hardest questions.
I thought you had some kind of, I thought you had a special license. That's why I was asking.
All right, other questions? Bridget?
Hi, thank you. Um. First of all, um, I'm, when I'm looking at the local rerouting near I two oh five. I'm, I'm confused what this all means. So it says change relative to twenty twenty seven baseline for Borland Road east of Stafford Road and sixty fifth Avenue, alternative one minus forty. So what does this mean? Minus forty to fifty percent? Traffic or traffic goes down there?
Yeah, so that's um, the, the, the reported number is the change in the toll scenario compared to a scenario or the, the baseline, which is a no toll scenario.
So when, um, so the recommendations are alternative three and alternative four?
Yes.
And it says that it would go up ninety to one hundred percent.
Yeah, so that's one of the key rerouting patterns that we've identified at this level, at this kind of initial stage, is that there would be a rerouting pattern east on Borland Road, east of Stafford Road.
Okay, and the percentages mean certainty or number of cars or what?
Yeah, uh, this is the daily traffic volume. Um, in our technical report, we reported for each of the hours um individually. So the AM peak hour, the PM peak hour and a couple of off peak hours.
Okay, so um, so in one of these situations, it's a hundred percent increase. Right?
Yeah, yeah, there's a, there's.
I don't understand how it can be a suggested alternative because right now we're already dealing with a lot of gridlock in this area. So um, anyway, that, I, I just, I wasn't sure if I understood it right because it was kind of alarming. And um, I'm surprised that it's being suggested as an alternative, at least coming from our area. I have a lot of concerns about all of this, how much this is costing just to even do all this work on this. And um, and I'm having trouble with the idea of people um, being penalized for driving. And the way that we help our situation for infrastructure is by um, people not being able to afford to just drive themselves and they have to double up with other people. We have issues with that with housing in our area where people can't afford their rent and they double up with other people and couch, couch surf. And I'd hate to see that happening on our roadways. Um, and I'd say just from my own perspective, I'm a person that goes out and does work on a daily basis in my car, not at peak hours. I have a hybrid car. Um, so I'm not doing environmental damage at the same rate. And I think the cars are going to get better. So I just, um, I have trouble with that. As um, the argument, I think that personally, we should be figuring out ways to get people better rates to get into more energy efficient cars and not penalize them for driving. And we're in this area, just so you guys know, because I know um, lose, you're not from here. People don't realize that our area, the number one concern that our citizens face and um, talk to us about is the gridlock that they're facing here in Tualatin on a daily basis. Not just on our freeways, but on our side roads as, as well. And we were just talking earlier this evening about the desire for higher density housing decoupled from a transportation plan from the state. So we're already as a city, gonna have to shoulder that somehow. So this is just another, um, I just don't. I don't have a lot of positive things to say, but I appreciate that you're um, that you're here communicating. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Other comments, questions? I just saw Paul's angle up and then Nancy.
Thank you, thank you very much. Um, I too share Counselor Brooks' concerns and confusion with your modeling. The way I interpret the modeling, it seems more fantasy than reality and it seems more based on a wish list on your part to justify what and how you're going to do something and not the realities of how this area works and the fact that the two oh five is different. And it's been noted by, and if you've been doing your work in the rest of the metro region, Paul, Commissioner Paul Savis has verbalized this much better than I possibly could, because he's been doing this for a lot longer than I have. Um, that that artery is a unique uh segment of this community and doesn't provide, this area doesn't provide for any other alternative. Um, so in one of your slides, you talk about, um, uh, let me look at my notes here so we don't have to go back to the slide. Um, toll system designed to limit rerouting from tolling. Um, the, the whole point of, 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 of having a toll road is also to supply, to, to provide somebody with an alternative route so they don't have to pay the toll. So what you're designing is a system where their alternative route is down Borland Road, which is not designed to handle any traffic. Or Norwood Road, which is basically a residential area and not designed traffic. Or Stafford Road, which has one, currently has, uh, based on some studies that Clackamas County did, one of the highest uh traffic incidents, including deaths uh in the entire region, um, going all the way out to Salem. So you're not doing anything in my view that's going to help alleviate the main problem and the needs of what this community and what this area needs. My, my second thought, and my, it's more of a que- this is a question. You talk about an alternative four, breaking it down into four segments, but my understanding was you have tolling authority provided you're adding something new. And what was, it was explained to me last year that if they're adding a bridge, they can toll. If they're adding a lane, they can toll. When you divide it into four segments, you no longer, you have, you have two bridges that you could toll for. Um, and you have a lane that I guess you can add in certain sections, but one section going uh, from uh Stafford Road on out has, you're not adding anything. And so I'm not, it's not clear to me how you could then create four segments of tolling um, under the guidelines laid down by the federal government on how you're allowed to toll. Um, uh, can you clarify that for me, please?
Lucinda, who do you want to take this?
Probably you.
Okay, so there's two federal tolling programs. There's the section one twenty nine toll authority, which is what you're referring to. You absolutely have to have um added, you have to pay for an added improvement, an added lane. It can be applied to a lane. It can be applied to a bridge replacement, uh rehabilitation, et cetera. And your toll authority is really limited by that. Um, and then there's the value pricing pilot program in which Oregon has a slot in and that provides a lot more flexibility. There's more approval associated with it. So you don't have um, the outright authority to toll like you do in section one twenty nine. But, and it has to go through the US Department of Transportation Secretary of Approval. So it's a different type of authority, needs more approval, but we do have a slot in that program as well. So we could apply it. If we were to get approval through um, the USDOT.
Okay, thank you. And then the, my last question is just a follow-up to Counselor Brooks' uh question. Or actually, I'm sorry, Counselor Pratt's question. My understanding was the, the, the intent of the state legislature was that the tolling and in, and I'm using my words, not their words, would be temporary, that it would be tolling until it paid for the construction and then the tolling would, would be done. And now what I'm hearing from you today is, well, no, there'll always be tolling because there's always maintenance. But road maintenance has always been covered by um, other funds associated with um, like gas tax and, and car registration. And so why the change in tone from, we're gonna have tolling for twenty years or twenty-five years to a, no, we think we're gonna always have tolling?
Didn't say that. What I said was the Transportation Commission could decide because you do still need maintenance and gas tax, as you know, are not sustainable right now and are going away. They are going to leave. That's why we're doing the road user charge. Trying to get that program up.
Thank you for, I don't want to put words in your mouth.
I, I know, I know. I appreciate that.
In case you can't tell, I am anti-tolling to a large degree and not happy with this entire process because of the inequity that it causes um, and some, a lot of other issues. And I just, I, my preference would be if you want to alleviate traffic on two oh five, then put a toll road on the other side of the Lamont Bridge and charge people who are coming into the metro area to use the metro roads and that would solve the problem. Because you would then not be charging us in, within the metro region to make improvements so that people coming from Salem can get to Portland. And I'm not, it's never been made clear to me why I need to pay to let Salem individuals um, get to Portland faster or get to Vancouver or get to the airport faster. And why they don't have to necessarily pay depending on the routes that they choose. So uh, I don't want to be here till one in the morning, so I'm gonna stop talking, but thank you for your presentation, but thank you for your present. I appreciate all you guys' effort.
You're welcome.
Presenting grains.
Thank you. Um, I think the, I guess sort of later on with some of the other counselors have mentioned war is being moved forward. I, is potential shift to transit being negligible to none? We talked about, you know, the alternative routes and increasing traffic on Borland Road thirty to forty percent. And that's now. That's not with the potential buildup that we have coming in that whole Stafford triangle area, which is going to explode the amount of the traffic, the amount of business, the amount of residential out there. I mean, it's insane. Um, and then I look at, it's double almost any other cost implementation estimate that's on. The only thing that supports alternate for, in a logical way, because it doesn't support dodging, it does accidents, it doesn't, and traffic issues. The only thing that it does is it gives you the very, very highest net toll revenue. And I've, I, I just find that shocking. Um, there's been so much on the neighborhoods. There's been so much discussion or attempted discussion about equity. I'm not seeing that here. What I'm seeing is the shortest route out to the highest dollar amount that can be raised and you're doing it on the cities that can least bear the of the, I'd love to have someone, if possible, and how alternative four is. and how alternative four is going forward when everything is either worse or average on your grid, except for the revenue.
Matt, looking for you.
So there's a lot that goes into our recommendations of alternatives three and four. Part of it was that alternative one and alternative five had kind of a concentrated rerouting impact. Alternative one specifically to Oregon City across Oregon City Archbridge. Most of the other alternatives handle that pattern because they kind of spread out the cost. The, whereas alternative five kind of has concentrated rerouting impact through and then kind of on the west side near Borland Road. Very, and we can manage those, those, refine those toll rate assumptions. We won't make a decision about that. We're trying to be relatively neutral. It's just kind of catching my mouth. The goal, the, the benefit of alternative four, or if you're just using one of the second, or a cost, if you're passing all the way through, you pay the full cost. So it was really about the implementation issue and the ability to manage traffic in the long term on I-205. Is, is the bigger factor that and the revenue.
Can I, can I just add just a little bit? Because like I can hear words going. One of the things that Matt says, they're using the 2027 model, which is like, you know, it's not that much time. They're going to use the 2040 when they get into the environmental assessment, which takes into account this for grid. So the analysis at the top, and he's saying analysis four, yes, you see the diversion, but then it spreads out across the region versus just being concentrated in one area, which is what one did and what five did, right? And I've heard this a few times. I'm sorry. So I'm feeling like, ah, I can kind of talk it. And two was like one. So then the ones that they want to look deeper into, now those aren't, that's why she chose says, and what he provided for you was the analysis that they've done, the 2020s modeling, or 2027 data. And said, we can add another one in there to look at. But actually, the 2040, once they start doing that modeling, and we'll of course come back and update you, you'll be able to see what that looks like, the 2040 numbers versus what we're doing that short time period of 2027.
Okay.
I helped her.
No, I mean, it answers my questions, but my concerns and my objections remain. So how do we, how do we stop alternative four from going forward? I mean, I think it would be calamitous to our area.
And then to the next step to analyze them more. Does that make sense? So we're not, alternative four is in a, it's a recommendation to go forward to analyze more. That's all this is. This is not implementation. So if you want, if, if we wanted to choose four, we're trying to go in with two or three. If we went in with two or three, that's fine. If there's another one that folks, you know, comments come in and it looks like everybody wants to look at one, we'll do one, three, and four.
Okay.
So we're, we're going to take them into, so the comment period is for that. And can I just, I just wanted to talk, I keep hearing everybody saying equitable for low income for driving, doubling up for driving is, I'm going to say it goes both ways. It goes, it could be low income, but it could also be somebody who's conservative and cares about the environment, right? Because HO, sharing rights means both ways. But the Equity and Mobility Advisory Committee is who's looking at this program, like what is equitable? And trying to put that layer on top of it. So we're not leaking that out, that you just don't see it as a person need because it's a golden objective, right? We want to see what that looks like. So they have the same concerns. I've heard them, the same concerns about burdens from low income or others and how we can alleviate those. So they are already thinking about that, and you should see their recommendations should come out around that for sure.
When do you think we'll see that? Because I mean, that's a huge concern for us because with the price of housing, seeing people being driven out to the extreme edges, suburbs, and then they're having to commute into where their jobs are. So they're going where, sunny side road area, there's a lot of teen comes in and there's a bunch of industrial work up there. So when do we get to see this? Because I mean, that's a huge concern for me.
For me. Tomorrow. Tomorrow. I'll be looking at what that, it's called the work tomorrow, alternatives. So this is in concert with.
And thank you very much. I appreciate your answers. I apologize. Just for tone, but
No, no apologies.
No, and you know, if there's any way that we can dead end the alternative four as the process continues, I would like to hear more about how we weigh in on that and tamp that one down. So, thank you.
Your com, your comments are welcome, and we'll take those into consideration. I think that once the, the deeper analysis is done, you'll see another picture. Because I think that that is not the picture you'll see in the end.
Counselor Reyes.
Yeah. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
I, and I think we bring up equity because somehow we want to make sure that the people that are working in that area are not paying more than, you know, I mean, they're driving there, they're using their vehicles, like less, people who do landscaping. And we're thinking about that. And it is in addition to their commute to go to work. So for, that's what we bring it up about. And also the traffic that it's going to create in our community, especially in that area where we have the, I don't know if I mentioned this, a Tuolton free clinic.
Yeah.
So I think that's one of the reasons why we bring this up. So you can know, we know our community, and we know the people that use that area. And we want to make sure that they are able to have access to these services and not be congested with people that weren't, are not supposed to be there, or they're just passing by, but they decided to exit right there on Stafford Road and then use our streets. So I think that's one of the reasons why we bring this up. My, one of my concerns is when you're doing your survey, you're sending people to a website to do a survey, right? And you say it's in Spanish and English. I'm just interested in seeing who actually fills out that survey. Because I could, I think the one, one point I mentioned, my community are not used to being asked, how would you like this to look? How would you like this road to be better for you? And, and I feel like that, those are things that are unknown for my community because they're not from countries that ask them questions. They just kind of, the government simply implements. And so I guess my, my concern is that we actually reach out to those people that are commuting, that are working, that are using those services in that area, and this is going to affect them tremendously.
So our community engagement liaisons will be in communities, in their own communities, actually, and they will handle all the survey, the survey questions, either by phone, Facebook, or, or just with their friends, in their own native tongue. So we are hitting that, and we're also contacting community-based organizations, getting on their websites. We're trying to make the, trying to get the information out. So if you know another way, or, or you know, that we can reach, we're trying to reach communities. Our EMAC or Equity Mobility Advisory Committee are folks who either have experience or work in that, in that area, and they'll do the same thing, too, by dispersing the information out and gathering back the comments. So we're not, the survey, yes, is online, but yes, that survey can be done over the phone. We can call in for the survey. So there, we're trying to get it many different ways, not just, not just online survey.
Thank you.
Sure.
Bridgette.
I'm sorry to double dip, but I could, I just want to say, as far as the equity concerns, I have to respond as a person that's a social worker, a clinical social worker that has worked with people on fixed incomes, that work with our elderly folks, honored citizens, and people on disability, any extra bill impacts them. And I've seen up close and personal what life looks like. We're going to have more homeless people as a result of health problems and people burdening more than we've seen before with COVID. So I, my concerns around that aren't light. And then when we talk about environmental impact and taking traffic off the freeways into the communities, which I'm sure there'll be some commercial traffic as well, that has health impacts on individuals in more concentrated ways than when the traffic stays on the freeways. So from a public health perspective, I also have concerns. Those are the kind of equity concerns I'm talking about when I'm thinking about these things. And, and finally, I also have questions about environmentally, why, when we want to make environmental changes in our state, it's left to this, the populate, the population. We, we pay for the plastic, you know, we do the bag man's, we recycle our stuff, but when it comes to corporate help, corporate taxes, corporate contributions, I don't see that. Instead, we're going to everyday people, people that are already distressed and more distressed now, and saying, you know, we're going to charge you for driving on the road. There's no other route except for communities. And okay, we're okay with polluting there. So those are my concerns around equity. It's not just equity for people that are, that are in crisis. It's also equity for everyday people that, whose communities aren't going to be impacted. And, and so I want to be really clear about that. Thanks.
So I, real quick, can I send you also my, the equity, the equity committee's roster? We have a doctor on there. We have somebody, I mean, so we're, we're trying to cover all those areas. So let me send that, I'll send that also.
Valerie.
When I look at your goals and objectives, I have issues with the first one right off the bat. I mean, the first one's the equity, and I'll leave that one alone. I think that's been discussed enough here. But limiting additional traffic rewriting, we're seeing on Borland, it's going to increase tremendously. So I'm not seeing where you're going to meet those goal, that goal. And the next one, support safe travel regardless of mold. And I don't see when you're increasing on the side roads, the traffic, how, how could, that could possibly be? It says, making sure it's not less safe, but how could it, I mean, if I'm on a bike and you've got twice the traffic, I'm at a hot, lot higher risk of getting in an accident or anybody else. And then the big one to me is the improving air quality and contributions to climate change and reducing localized air pollutants. I'm not seeing, the only thing I've heard in your presentation that could possibly do that is having the HOV lanes with multiple riders. And the question, I don't, I don't know that that's going to reduce it a whole lot. And like Counselor Brooks said, the, being in local neighborhoods, I don't see why, how that's an effective result to reduce pollutants. But my question to you is on I-205 specifically, it's not like I-5 were a good segment of the people traveling are probably going to Portland to, as their end point. We have people going all over. So have you looked at the endpoints where people travel? Because I think it would be very difficult to have multiple riders, because people work in Oregon City, Gladstone, in Portland, all over. And it's, there's a lot more endpoints I see on that route, which I think would make it very difficult to have a significant increase in multiple riders. And I'm a person that multiple rided road before COVID, so I support it, but I just don't see how it's very feasible on that route.
Can we do two things? Can I have Heather first talk about the goals, objectives, and how they'll be measured? And then Matt on the other side, Cole, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Lucinda. So the goals and objectives, a lot of that, that has not been measured at the screening level. So these are, when, when Lucinda's talking about going into the NEPA analysis and looking out to 2040 and doing a more in-depth study of the alternatives, that's when those come into play. And there are performance measures that we use. Some of them are quantitative, so they'll be based on the model, and some of them are qualitative. So we have professionals that do an analysis and assessment in more of a qualitative way. So we really haven't touched many of those yet. And so, like Matt said, it's very, it's really largely based on the regional travel demand model. As we move to the NEPA analysis and look at the two or three alternatives that we carry forward, it will be more in-depth. We'll do more, there's a lot more tools that we'll be using, modeling tools, which Matt could talk to, but it's just, it's a lot more detailed. And we'll be looking at more localized, like intersections, and what are those impacts on several, like many, many different disciplines. So it really, that hasn't been done yet at this level. This is really high-level screening to get down to a reasonable number of alternatives to do that more in-depth analysis.
And what happens if you do that in-depth analysis and it just doesn't pencil out, to use an accounting term?
Yeah. So part of the process is to, you do the analysis and you find where those impacts are. And then if you can't, I mean, so we're in an environmental assessment, which means we need to get to a finding of no significant impact, which just means that if that alternative has an impact that increases localized traffic in areas by, you know, 300%, and there's nothing we can do to mitigate that down. So if there's like some sort of mitigation that we can do to reduce that from 400 to, you know, a more reasonable number, then that's what that process is. So that's why we have to have a reasonable number of alternatives to do it, because it's very iterative. And there's a lot of identification of what the impacts are, and then how do we address those impacts? Can we address those impacts? And if we can't, I mean, the reality is, if the alternative floods the local system and there's nothing we can do about it, that's not a successful project. So it's, it's really that next step. And that's why it's another, you know, two years of analysis that we'll be doing.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right. Very well put. The air, the air quality measures and the impacts on air quality are assessed generally based on both the overall demand on the transportation system, as well as the speed of the vehicles on it. So we're kind of touching on it at a high level at this early stage, just looking at the vehicle miles traveled and vehicle hours traveled in the, in the overall network. But like Heather said, when, when we get it down into the NEPA analysis, that's where we really be able to assess what their quality.
And what does the speed have to do with? I just don't understand. So.
Sure. Yeah. So vehicles tend to be polluted more when they're moving very slowly, when Sure. Yeah. So vehicles tend to be polluted more when they're moving very slowly, when they're stuck in congestion. Happening regularly on I-205 right now. And so if they're moving, so we're trying to look at the overall system. So if they end up moving really slowly and being stuck in congestion on the neighborhood streets, that would have just much of the, that would have, you know, a, a negative impact. If they're moving clear and through on I-205, that would have a positive impact. And we would look at the overall system and see what the net effect would be from an air quality perspective.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Robert. If you haven't, because we, we got to move along. So, oh, Council President Grimes will have a second bite at the apple, but we got to move things along. Go ahead, Counselor Kellogg.
I'll, I'll be brief. So Mr. Delada, did I see a map of the five alternatives in your slide presentation? Because that was not in our packet.
Um, your packet, yeah, it should have had all five.
I've just spent time reviewing it. It didn't have a map of any of the alternatives.
Doesn't have a map. It has a chart. It has a table now. Oh. So you should see, it should be a one pager with just a table.
We can send those over to you for sure.
We can send the maps.
The larger maps. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, please do. That would help.
Yeah, sorry about that.
No problem. So I'm curious as to the diversion percentage that cited for Stafford Road and Borland going east on alternative three, that's estimated to be somewhere between 90 and 100%. But on alternative four, it's only estimated to be between 30 and 40%. Can you explain the difference between the amount of diversion that would happen in those two scenarios?
You're talking about Borland Road east of Stafford?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, the diversion there does depend on the alternative that we're looking at. And so in alternative four, because the toll is being broken out into four different segments, essentially the toll on that piece between Stafford and 10th is lower in alternative four on that, that one piece. Whereas in alternative three, you're breaking the toll amount just between the two locations. So essentially it's, it's twice as high.
So you're anticipating 60 to 70% of that diversion would get off somewhere between the two bridges?
No, sorry. That, so that number represents the change in volume over the course of the day at that specific location. It's not.
Right. And, and I just logically, I don't understand it because of the stole, if the toll starts after Stafford Road in scenario four, and it only starts at the Twalton River Bridge in scenario three, there's no exit between those two points. So if somebody wants to get off at Stafford to avoid the toll at Stafford or after Stafford, they're going to get off to avoid the toll at the bridge.
Yeah, that, that, that's true. The, the piece between I-5 and Stafford is not told in either scenario.
Right. And that's my next question.
Yeah. So the, okay, the, the piece between I-5 and Stafford is, is not told in both scenario. The piece between Stafford and 10th is told in both scenarios. But because we're chopping up the toll differently, in alternative three, the toll on that piece is essentially twice as high. So that, that parallel route of Orland east of Stafford is, is more likely to take on more, more traffic. Whereas that, that piece further to the east is, is taking out less traffic.
Okay. Well, it's, it's just modeling at this point, but I would think that those numbers are going to be closer to commensurate than, you know, doubling. But again, it's just modeling. So what you brought up there, there is no tolling west of Stafford Road between the I-5, 205 junction and Stafford Road. Why is that? Is Stafford Road being created as a, you know, a point of, of last resort where you get off if you don't want to pay the toll?
The, the boundaries for which locations are being told in, in these alternatives were defined on the value pricing feasibility analysis. And they're kind of associated with the I-205 widening project between Stafford Road and Oregon 213. So we're kind of proposing to tell those segments that are also where the widening project would be implemented.
Okay. So even, and I don't want to go into too much history, but you know, I looked at the value pricing, you know, analysis and Concept C had all of the greatest impacts for revenue and congestion relief, but the concerns were with equity and mobility. And so you went with Concept E and then did a tolling and equity mobility committee anyway, that would have addressed those in Concept C. So fundamentally, I don't understand why we're not tolling the entire entirety as, as the legislature directed, but we'll leave that for another day. Ms. Broussard, you may be the right one to answer this question, but you mentioned that with the NEPA analysis, there's going to be mitigations. And if there is substantial impact from diversion on Stafford Road or on Borland Road, that'll be identified as a mitigation. But who pays for those mitigations? Is that part of ODOT's treasure chest that they pay from or is that left to the county to figure out?
That's part of the project.
Okay. And what, I mean, I don't know, I know we haven't gotten that far, but what sort of mitigations would it be? Would it be adding additional capacity to those roads?
I don't know. I, I, I don't know.
Okay. Those are the only questions I have. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Assistant Grimes.
Um, I'll try to be really brief. To Counselor Kellogg's point, that was one of the things that I was going to ask about was possible mitigation. Because Borland Road is a little bit unusual in that between Stafford and 65th. So the section that kind of comes into Eastern Twalton with two grade schools, a mega church and a regional hospital that feed onto that road. And those are very difficult things to mitigate or to work around. They're heavy traffic, they're sensitive traffic. We have school buses, we have children. And we have emergent, emergency vehicles trying to get to the hospital. So, you know, Borland Road is fraught and it's very difficult. And I, I think the mitigation discussion would be a very difficult one when we do get there. I think there's a lot of sensitivities on that. And then my other comment just goes to what you were saying at the beginning of the presentation and about how difficult it is during this COVID period to engage public and get public feedback and public interaction. And I'm wondering if ODOT has some sort of a war chest set aside where they can sort of bust open some new options to try to get in front of people and get some community feedback. You know, buying pages and community newspapers, maybe doing some localized, even cable television or something in the different neighborhoods to try to reach people in a different fashion, direct mail pieces to the homes. Something bigger than what we've done in the past, because I think we're in sort of an unprecedented time and people are overwhelmed and, you know, I think getting public input right now is going to be a real challenge unless we sort of break out a little bit and do things differently and, and maybe be much more aggressive trying to reach people and solicit input from people.
So we are doing the newspapers, the community newspapers. That's already taken care of. I believe we are looking at some kind of cable TV. We're actually hitting some folks on Facebook or their media choice. I think there was one that I don't think we're doing, which is the direct mailers. So that, I'll, I'll write that down. Is that, I'll write that down. I don't, I haven't heard that we're, you know, looking at that. So I got that one down. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right. So I just got some points and then we'll move on. But I said it before, being a former New Yorker, you know, agencies always say tolls are temporary and the tolls around the bridges in New York are still there. They never go away. So I never really believed that tolls will ever go away. They're there. Once they're put in there, they stay there. Second thing, this question is for Matt. You mentioned a couple of times that alternatives three and four manage traffic. What is managing traffic? It was specifically, it's, you know, pretty general.
Sure. Yeah. No, good, good question. So the idea behind this tolling is a variable rate tolling structure. So the toll will vary over the course of the day. So the idea is that we will have higher tolls when there's congestion during the peak hours, such that we can reduce the congestion that is there already today and would otherwise get worse in the future. The off-peak hours have lower tolls. And so part of the idea behind congestion pricing is that people might shift their time of day. Most all these, all these pieces of it is the behavioral change. So the idea is that you're charging a higher toll during those congested periods to get traffic back moving and create, stop the, the long queues and the hyper congestion that happens. So when we talk about managing congestion, it's, it's resolving it through, through the pricing strategy and variable rate tolling over the course of the day.
Okay. Thank you. And then I think, I don't know who said it. For the bridge, so we're looking at the tolls, you specifically said the money would go towards rebuilding the bridges and bridge maintenance. What about the additional, how does the additional lanes and I on 205 get paid for?
Those get paid out of that also.
Okay. So it's, it's bridges and, and lanes.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Cause you, you mentioned bridges, but didn't mention the lane.
Oh, sorry.
A lot of us also want on 205, especially forces to pay for it. And then last thing is mentioning a lot about on-peak, off-peak and that off-peak local roads could probably handle the additional demands on it. And I, I kind of laugh at that, that off-peak doesn't exist anymore down here in this area. I mean, Twalton Road, Twalton Shorewood Road never has an off-peak. 43 never has an off-peak. A lot of these roads in this area, because people are using backroads all the time to avoid congestion, local roads are overwhelmed. So assuming that the man goes down on a local road during off-peak hours, I think is deceiving in a way, not in a bad way, but you're miscon, you're misconceiving what the demand is on local roads and off periods right now. Cause a lot of the bigger roads in this area, the, the man never goes down. I mean, the demand might go down between 12, 12 AM and 4 AM. But you know, as soon as the sun comes up until late in the evening, Twalton Sherwood Road, for example, is never not congested anymore. Well, it is, right now it's pretty good because of COVID, but before that, it's always busy. That's one of like Counselor Brooks mentioned, that traffic is the biggest complaint around here. Even on our side streets, we hear about it. You know, we dropped $20 million in a bond to fix some of the issues in our local roads that we don't even own, you know, state and county facilities because congestion. So relying on these side roads where people can divert to on off-peak hours, I think is a bad thing to model on. And that's, well, I'll leave it. Anything else? I appreciate you all coming out tonight. As usual, you know, we, this, you can see this is a hot topic. We spent quite a bit of time here. And I know you've been getting rough receptions everywhere else. But I do appreciate you getting the word out and taking our questions and taking those questions back to ODOT and hopefully getting some resolution on them.
And we'll send you all the docs that we talked about this evening. And thank you again. We appreciate your time.
Appreciate you.
Thank you. Good night.
All right. So moving on, where, where are we now? All right. We're in public hearings. So public hearing item number one, we have consideration of resolution number 5508-20, adopting findings in support of special procurement and authorizing the city manager to enter into a direct negotiation contract with Wallace Engineering, PLLC for construction engineering and inspection services for the Garden Corner Curves project. That's quite a mouthful. And is this Jeff and Mike?
This is Jeff and Mike again. So, and once again, I am just going to introduce Mike, Jeff Fox, Public Works Director, with Mike McCarthy, Principal Transportation Engineer and Project Manager for the Garden Corner Curves project. So Mike, take it away.
Good evening. And, you know, we are here tonight to consider the resolution that the mayor just read and I won't read the mouthful again. So I think you're familiar with the history of the Garden Corner Curves project and the Wallace team that led us through the conceptual design process back in 2016 and 17. And then after the alternatives was chosen, the bond passed, it was funded. And then Wallace, the Wallace team, which included Alta and others, was chosen through a request for proposals process in 2018 to provide the engineering, the design services for the project. And our original intent was to hire one team that could take the project all the way through construction. Unfortunately, our request for proposals at the time wasn't clear enough about that, which is basically why we're here tonight. And the initial contract was for the design engineering. And we had planned to add the engineering services during construction. Once we really knew the specific work that needed to be done, like once it was designed and we knew more about the specific inspections to be performed. Then we started negotiating for these services during the design process this spring. So we could have a good, tight scope and spend the city's money wisely. And we believe we've negotiated a good price that includes only the hours and the work and costs that we need to complete the project. We've also been real happy with what Wallace has done. We think they are the best team to go forward because they know the project the best. They're the most familiar with all of the issues and the various conversations that have been had throughout the project as to why certain aspects of it are important. And so we think of the right team going forward, which is why we recommend approving the resolution and continuing with Wallace on a directly negotiated contract. Jeff, Rashawn, is there anything I missed?
No, I think that covered it.
Yep. I, I think that covers it. I just mentioned that there's some findings in both the staff report as well as in, in the resolution itself related to the legal.
Questions for Mike or Jeff? All right. So since this is a public hearing, is there anyone in the poll center or in the Zoom meeting who elected to testify in support of this resolution?
Mayor, there's nobody at the poll center and nobody to speak on Zoom meeting either.
Okay. And assuming no one in poll center or in the Zoom meeting would like to speak in opposition to this resolution?
Correct.
All right. Counsel discussion. Robert.
Yeah. I'd just like to thank staff for preparing a very thorough resolution that goes through all of the special contracting guidelines. I agree with the comments from Mike and Jeff, based on my interaction with the folks at Wallace, that they're the right people for the job. We've got everything queued up for this project and this is sort of a last step before kickoff. So with that, I will make a motion that the council adopt resolution 5508-20.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to approve resolution number 5508-20. Counselor Brooks.
Hi.
Counsel Pratt.
Hi.
Counsel Kellogg.
Hi.
Counsel Morrison.
Yes.
Counsel Reyes.
Yes.
Assistant Grimes.
Hi.
And I go, I also, it's unanimous. All right. Moving on to general business.
Thank you.
Item number one. Thanks, Mike and Jeff.
Thank you.
Okay. Have a good night.
You too.
Item number one, consideration of resolution number 5515-20 of the city council of the city of Twalton, authorizing the city manager to execute an intergovernmental agreement with Washington County for small business emergency assistance grants.
Funds.
Jonathan's all dressed up on a hot day.
Very rare that I get to dress up, so I figured I'd take advantage of it. So Mayor, members of council, tonight, let me bring before you a resolution for consideration for the $680,000 CARES grant funding allocation from Washington County. Cheryl, would you like me to share my screen for the presentation?
That'd be great. And then just go through it and then take it off.
Okay. So I've not used PowerPoint on my computer in a while. So, so tonight, real quick. So I'm going to outline a couple of key points. As you all know, through Cheryl's email, we also received $243,000 from the Business Oregon One-to-One Matching Grant from last week. We do not know the full details of it, but tonight we will get to that in a moment. Then the $252,000 CARES Act reimbursement, that will be for the TDC resolution later tonight. And then $680,000 for the CARE Small Business Assistance. So tonight, the question within the resolution that we're asking you to approve for the contract is what economic impact does the city council want to make with the CARES Act funding? And so we have three requested council actions. One, a simple approval of a motion for contract modification with the Business Oregon. One, a simple approval of a motion for contract modification with the Business Oregon for an additional two hundred and forty-three thousand. That will require a later date resolution, but this motion is to let us notify the State of Oregon that we intend to do this contract modification with the two hundred and forty-three. And then also direction for the funding after you approve this resolution for your priorities for the economic impact of six hundred and eighty thousand. I'm not going to go too much into what the CARES Act funding is, but just so you know, the City of Twalton has received six hundred and eighty from the one hundred and four million in CARES Act funding that Washington County has received, and then two hundred and fifty-two for the Twalton Development Commission. A real brief recap of our recovery plan mission to manage and implement an effective, efficient, and nimble local economic recovery effort in collaboration with our vital partners, the charts of path for our future economic prosperity. Real quick, we are in the stabilization phase, so so far to date, our efforts have been revolving around the business recovery centers, which are doing great work over there at the Chamber. I know on your Friday calls, you had other suggestions, but right now, these are the potential areas that we thought we would start with, which is business assistance, rent assistance, childcare assistance, and potential planning for the future. And that's where I will stop. So tonight, council, what I would like for staff would like you to discuss how you would like to spend the six hundred and eighty thousand. Real quick, I do want to mention the the tenants of the contract, if you haven't had a chance to read it. So there's only seven key obligations that the city has to comply with for this contract. And this is irrespective of the two fifty-two, for the six eighty. This, the contract states that this has to assist small businesses. It can only be in the form of a grant, no owns, must comply with the CARES Act funding. May, you may implement this at the city level, or you may contract that out with a third party. A detailed plan must be submitted to the county, and we've already submitted a very broad draft version based on your council priorities over the last several weeks. And they have given a tentative agreement, but once we have a finalized plan, we will just update that with the county. At the very end, we have to submit a report due to the federal audit and grant guidelines. So, yeah, so Mayor, I'll turn that over to you to lead the discussion. But in your packet, we outlined four key areas that you may expand on. Business assistance, rental assistance, childcare assistance, and future planning. And the reason we put in the future planning is as we see the current state of our of our country, there are certain restrictions being in place. And so I thought it'd be prudent if council would give a consideration to holding some money back to preend or plan for any kind of further restrictions that may be imposed at the state level.
All right, so just so unclear, you've got slides after the one you showed us, is that you're stopping here and you're going to continue on? Or what are you looking for right now?
So the reason we included those slides and the reason I didn't go through it is because we want to have a face-to-face conversation, but I can go through the rest of the slides. But I figured, given the staff report, it details that much more in-depth, and so, yeah.
Okay, just want to make sure, I wasn't going to cut you off. All right, so discussion. Who would like to start off? Paul?
Yeah, I'll be really quick. First off, Jonathan, thank you very much. And I cannot thank you enough for all the work you do within the community of Twalton, who, as I told Cheryl earlier, basically have your pulse on what's going on and why it's going on and and where where help is needed. So my, one comment, a quick question, my my comment is, my preference is whatever this council decides is something that's done quickly. And so that those who are really struggling and are not really sure how they're going to open up their doors on August first or September first, that we're helping them and that we're not sitting on a lot of money. And I saw your thing about the future, and I think you'd mentioned that once before, if I remember correctly. And I'm comfortable with with a small set aside. The the question I had was on the childcare, while I'm all in fair that, I know that's a huge issue. And it's a huge issue for the schools as well. It's something that Counselor Brooks mentioned at the work session. The conversations we've been involved with Rachel Puzek and her Friday meetings. Dr. Sue is extremely concerned about, you know, how that's managed. So how does that fit within the guidelines, though, of helping business other than, I guess, we're helping a childcare business? But then I'm not sure, I didn't quite understand the mechanics of them. That's the only question I had.
Yeah, so great question, Counselor. So the reason, and there's two ways you can do it, and I think we, I think you discussed this at the last meeting. So there's a way to help the facilities and also a way to help the workers. And so the way that we frame that childcare facility, it could either be a direct assistance to the facility, or it can be in the form of scholarships to the facility on behalf of the workers. So the way that it meets the criteria, if you help a Twalton worker that lives and works in Twalton, you are thereby helping the business. And so that's how Washington County is able to kind of get around it. A point of clarification, though, Counselor, the county has just released a very, very rough draft of their own childcare facilities assistance program. And so I don't know the full details of what they're intending to propose, but just so you know that Washington County is intending to use their CARES Act funding in this capacity as well. So you may not want to do that for Twalton. This was, this was submitted about four weeks ago when we initially got the six hundred and eighty, just to kind of get our foot in the door with Washington County. And it was just an idea based on your past discussions when we were talking about the Economic Stabilization Fund.
Bridget?
Well, I'm just curious about the last thing that you shared, Jonathan. Thank you as well. It's nice to be able to tout you and your team at other meetings like we were talking about. And when you say that the county is implementing this, is it impacting? So my thing, my question around that is, do childcare facilities, is it impacting here at the local level? Or would would Twalton need more access for help? And I guess when I'm thinking about that, I'm thinking about it from both perspectives. Maybe the childcare facilities might have an easier time tapping into things than workers might. I know that happens sometimes with county resources where there's very limited resources. And then, so I just am wondering where you see a localized effort being more, having more impact.
So one of the proposals that we submitted is just for your consideration, and this was before Washington County decided to do their program. When we were putting this together for Washington County in the initial phases about four weeks ago, this is right when the State of Oregon released their own grant for childcare facilities. And so due to Don's research, we have eleven registered childcare facilities that are commercially based in Twalton. We do not know the residential base, and there are eight types of childcare businesses in Oregon. Anywhere from a registered family to a certified provider, all the way up to a registered commercial center. And that I do not know. And so what we were trying to do is help those, because we didn't know at the time if schools were going to restart and workers were going to have to go back to work due to the UI ending, the end of this month. And so we wanted to provide you an option that if council saw fit to kind of broaden the base of what economic vitality is in addition to small business, this would be a good place to start. But in fairness, Washington County is kind of taking the lead now, so that may not be a priority that you may want to consider. And we're all playing catch-up these days with trying to get ahead of the next issue.
Thank you very much. I, it makes me think, and I'm just going to throw this out a little bit, even if the major. It's interesting, I understand a little bit about this model. It's something that I was part of design programs in my masters and stuff, the childcare. And it may be an opportunity also for people that, for smaller-based ones, for people that find themselves at home with their kids and know other people who have their kids working or who are working that need help for their kids if they're not sending their kids to school. It sounds very back and forth when we're talking, as Counsel Morrison was pointing out, about how stable school openings are going to be and how many people are going to take that option. And so it's interesting to me to have the possibility of small, like, micro childcare options to help people kind of pull through in this time. So I'm just thinking out loud, I'm.
Counsel Reyes?
Yeah, I, I also think that that's going to be a challenge one when it comes to childcare. How to, how to really identify the need and how we can help those families and businesses that have childcare, whether they're providers or they're families that need the the funds to have their kids go to childcare in the meantime. They work and, you know, maybe even a respite time for them. So I is, I think right now, and this is me also thinking out loud and having ideas out loud, and you guys can just say booze, squash them, no. But I'm just thinking, what about those childcare providers can say, provide a grant and say, you can probably take five kids or ten kids at no cost, or be able to give them the funds, give the providers the funds so that they can able, they're able to identify the families that bring the kids there and say, okay, we're not charging you for a month or two months of childcare, something, something to those lines. So that way, we're also helping the business, but they're also giving out that opportunity to bring their child free up, free up at cost. And so that's one thing that I was thinking. The other will be have families fill out the application to, to receive, where they can show proof. Like, there's some, some grants that you, that we have, I have received grants where you pay, we pay for the, for the, and then we turn in the receipts, and then we can pay for that, kind of like, that's another way of getting grants out for people. So I've just been thinking of ways of helping both, and not just the providers, but also the families that have the children. And maybe up to, up to a certain age, I think a child over a certain age can be considered stay home by, you know, themselves. And I know that was, that was something that one of our, when I was at the Salvation Army, the crack center, you can drop off your child if they're over a certain age, and they can be unsupervised by your parent, but they're in a facility that they were safe. So I don't know, there's, there's probably an age gap that we can, we can identify. But I was just thinking of both. We can just give a big portion to the providers, and then we don't know exactly. They might use it for, you know, PPE and all that stuff, or the protection stuff. But how is that helping the families and the children, the families that have children? So those are just ideas that I was thinking about, the childcare kind of idea. You know, either reimburse families that are paying childcare, especially those families that work in service areas like, like restaurants or, you know, just no partners, hair salons. Those places that have a heart, hotels that have a, you know, have had it tough throughout this whole pandemic. I would just, that's, that's what I've been thinking. And obviously, I do want some money to be put aside for the fall. Because I do think that in the fall, we might have some, something that might, I don't know if it's going to spike or not, but we're just going to be, you know, just safe and and have something for those, those months that are coming to help out families. And I'm thinking of micro fa, micro businesses and not those businesses that, you know, we think a small business, five hundred employees or less. We're like, that's not a small business for our community. Our community is really a mom and pops kind of thing, where they have like maybe five employees. Maybe the whole family works there, and that's their whole business, their whole income. So we chat to those businesses that we weren't able to award back in March. So I think that would be a good, a good way of letting them know, hey, there's this opportunity, you want to apply, here, here are the, the, this, here's the information you need to provide, all these things. I think that would be a good way of also building that rapport and not making them feel that we rejected them back in April. Or, and, you know, I would feel kind of, if there's this opportunity, I think we should, and they submitted their application, and they were micro businesses. I think we should reach out to them and try to, to let them know that there's an opportunity for them. That's what I've been thinking about business, childcare. I don't know much about rental assistance and all that. So if anyone wants to chime in and have any great ideas about that, that'd be great. But for me, those were the two that came to mind as far as providers, childcare providers, and also families.
Thank you.
All right.
Jonathan, like with Wash, I thought you said something earlier about people that live and work in Washington County or with the childcare. So is that what the Washington County assistance will likely look like?
So that I do not know. So when I said live and work here, that would be kind of an idea for what you could consider for a childcare facility. Since Twalton is getting it, I would assume.
Okay.
They want Twalton businesses and workers to benefit from the CARES Act.
Okay, my only concern about that is, what do we have, eighty percent of people that live here, work somewhere else, and vice versa? The people that work here don't live here generally. So I would, yeah, I would think it'd be great. It'd be great to help the childcare facilities locally and also maybe people at a certain income level that, I mean, this is really difficult for people right now with this current situation with children not going to school. As far as rent assistant, personally, I think we should give this up somehow between all these categories. But rent assistant, I just wanted to remind everybody, I think the mayor spoke earlier about they're projecting a forty, what was that homelessness project? It's really high. So that's a big issue, and I think we're all pretty aware that. I mean, people pay a lot more in rent than I pay for my home. It's just crazy, you know, and so I think that's going to be a huge need here also. And I definitely would like to save some for later. So that's my two cents.
So, Mayor, if I may, so tonight, what I would like for staff is kind of a direction of kind of key buckets. And then staff will come back with a plan. So if you, if you have an idea or a general area, like Counselor Reyes said, maybe focus more on micro businesses, we could bring back like a version of the Economic Stabilization Fund program that caters to identified industries that you identify as a priority. In the staff report, we said, would you like to consider the tourism industry? Would you like to consider childcare facility within this? Would you like to consider more of those micro businesses? And so tonight, when you pass the resolution, we will come back at the next council meeting, because we, to Counselor Morrison's point, get it out the door, but also we only have until December thirty-first, and by contract, November first, to spend this money, or to have it committed. And so if, literally, counsel, anything's on the table, and so if there's an idea that you want staff to explore, we'll explore it and bring it back. And we, we can debate it, or you can debate it on the merits of that. And as always, through Cheryl's leadership, if you have suggestions, you can pass that to her for this program, however you see fit.
Robert?
Jonathan, are, is there any tax liability associated with the recipient of the funds?
Yes.
There is?
Yes.
Okay, well, that certainly changes the dynamic about providing direct assistance to low-income people if you're going to jack their income up. And I mean, I guess we could make an adjustment to gross it up for for tax purposes, but that seems to add a pretty significant layer of confusion. Looking at the four buckets, I think the Economic Stabilization Fund two point O is a no-brainer. All of us know individual businesses that continue to struggle, those that did get funds, those that didn't get funds, those who are handcuffed by new regulations, there's just a lot of suffering out there. So I think that one is a for, for sure. On the rental relief piece, I'd like to get some more information on what overlap we might be experiencing. I know that there. I know that there are state dollars out there for rental assistance. I wouldn't be surprised if there are county dollars, uh, out there as well. And so while it is certainly, uh, you know, a no- a noble cause, I don't wanna duplicate efforts and not have the money spent. Or if somebody else is gonna pay for it, then we can direct our funds, uh, more specifically. Um, on the childcare facility piece, uh, I think, you know, the, the key there, um, given the tax liability, uh, is to provide the facility with scholarships, uh, for individuals. It doesn't do much good to give a childcare facility money if they don't have people coming in the door. Um, if you are able to give scholarships for people to come in, then that not only helps pay the wages of the workers, but it also helps, uh, the individuals who can get, um, some relief, whether it's, um, you know, respite, as, as one of you mentioned, or if it's to actually go to work, if anybody's gonna physically go to a workplace anymore. Um, and then also I share everyone's thoughts on reserving some portion of it. Uh, we'll figure out what the specifics on that are, but there's so much uncertainty out there, you know, if, if, and I don't wanna be too broad, but you know, if Congress doesn't act, uh, in the next week or two, then there's gonna be just a wave, I think, of, uh, of all sorts of, you know, evictions and bankruptcies and, and everything else. And so we don't have a crystal ball, but what we can do is, is set aside some amount of the funds, um, for contingency, which, which, you know, we don't know what those are gonna be. So I think that's a wise move. Uh, look forward to seeing what detailed information comes back from staff on those items. Bridget, did you already go, Bridget?
Well, I was just talking about the childcare, cause I wanted to ask the question while we was bringing it up in context. It wasn't a general conversation. I, I like all of the categories. And just something Council Kellogg had said about, um, just sitting on the padboard, I, I know that people that are trying to get rental assistance, that there's, um, uh, more need than capacity right now. So if, and I'm curious if rental assistance means for home or for business. That's one question I have. And then I do know that, um, there's an overload on the system. So if we had localized, um, eviction prevention, um, I think that statistically, it shows very good outcomes for people that small, um, amounts of money to prevent eviction can really make a big difference in preventing hu- houselessness. And I'm imagining there's a similar, um, outlook for businesses as well. So, um, I just wanna put that out there because even if there's other programs going, they're not meeting the needs. So if we have money that's here locally, to have a localized effort would probably be very helpful to our community. Um, there's people that have been trying to call in to get assistance for months and they can't get through the line. It's that kind of a thing. It went from like 5,000 to 30,000 people calling a day or applying, so.
Well, there's. All right, I've got my wish list. Here we go. All right, I, um, I like what you had. I had the same questions and concerns about the childcare. Depending on Washington, what Washington County does with their program. So I guess we'll find out what they're gonna roll out here pretty soon. I also, I wanna roll up into, uh, let me get my slide here. What a broaden rent assistance and make it also mortgage assistance. There's plenty of people who own their homes or attempting to own their homes that are getting behind on their mortgages also. And as Bridget just mentioned, it's easier to keep someone in their home, uh, and get them some money than kicking them out and trying to find, uh, shelter for them. So I'd like to give you, make that rental slash mortgage assistance. Uh, and I'm ripping this off in the city of Portland. These aren't my original ideas. I saw what they did and three of these, I really liked what they did. The second thing they're doing with some of their money is expanding their homeless services. So I've had conversations with Rose Money, uh, Family Promise over the last week or so. And they are now on a waitlist on those 10 rooms that they are running at the hotel in Tiger. So demand is big and as we just discussed, demand's gonna get bigger. So if we could set aside some money for homeless services where agency like Family Promise can have additional capacity, have additional rooms for those families displaced because of COVID, I think that would be a good idea. And finally, which I thought was kinda interesting, what Portland did, is they're gonna buy gift cards. They can buy gift cards from local businesses and not all micro businesses, of course. But picture buying Fred Meyer gift cards, Food for Less. Some of the supermarkets here in the area, you buy gift cards and you hand the residents rather than a cash check. You hand them a gift card, they can take it to Fred Meyer to get some food, make some local restaurants, um, services, uh, Home Depot, Lowe's, all those expenses people would not, might not be able to handle. Portland said to sign a bunch of money rather than giving cash assistance, they're gonna do it in the form of gift cards. I thought that was kinda innovative idea, especially folks who might be, uh, struggling with food. That they could take that gift card, run to Fred Meyer, run to Food for Less, run to Winco and get some groceries. Uh, and, uh, you know, some breaks in your house, you know, typical things that the emergency money that they might not have, that this gift card might, uh, get them over the hump. So those are the three things I discussed with Sherilyn in my Friday call that I thought was kinda cool from Portland. That it, you know, would expand the reach of this program for our residents in this difficult time. Bridget.
I just wanna say, I don't have a problem with gift cards, but I do wanna also think about flexibility of cash, because sometimes people need medicine or need, they need to figure out how they're gonna spend their money, like they need to make sure they pay their utilities. Um, so I've seen limitations in spending for people that are strapped and sometimes it can have negative outcomes. So I would just want there to be some kind of a flex option with that, just so that, um, um, I'm concerned about people paying their bills, keeping their lights on and staying in their, in their residences um, and eating, but, um, sometimes they can go to a food bank and they can pay their bills. So that's my only concern with that.
The fourth one actually that, uh, keeps coming up with certain cities is, and it might be part of our potential planning, set aside, setting aside money for utilities, mainly water sewer bills that are going unpaid. The city of Cornelius is just watching their unpaid bills skyrocket and they have no idea how they're gonna recoup those funds. Um, so we might wanna set some, set aside some money for utility offsets. You know, also we're not turning people's water off. And, um, I think there might be folks who just can't pay months and months worth of their water and sewer bill, that we might wanna have a pot of money that we can grant them, if you will, and, and cover that cost.
And Dawn may want to jump in on this. Um, um, the county has set aside a significant chunk of money and they've contracted with Community Action, uh, to, Dawn, do you wanna explain the program for utility assistance for Washington County? And we've given them our information about residents. So Dawn can chime in.
Yeah, so it's still fully being worked out through, uh, Clean Water Services is kind of the agency that's been coordinating with the cities to get this going. There's about $3 million that is being set aside for, in CARES Act funding for utility assistance. And we'll be, um, contracting with Community Action Network to do the intake and the administrative portions on that. Uh, we just sent over our, our portion of that contract this evening. And so there is something in the works through the, through the county, uh, and that funding. I'll know more on the exact program as it's being finalized, but we're hoping to have that up and going in the, uh, beginning of August.
So when it comes in terms of utilities, is that water, sewer, or is there also electricity and gas?
There, so there are electricity and gas programs out there already. Uh, I don't have enough detail on that because that's not a service that we've been, you know, we provide. So the portions that I've been privy to are water, sewer and stormwater.
Cause I know in my discussions with Maria Pope at PGE, uh, they're, they're obviously, they're also letting not turn people's lights off, but they probably aren't gonna waive the funds. They're gonna put people on payment plans based on what I heard. So maybe I'll morph my utility thing to what Bridget were just saying. For, you know, Northwest Natural and, uh, PGE kinda related expenses, uh, because, yeah, Community Action gets $3 million for the county. But that's an all county allocation where the people got to compete versus where we might be able to set aside for those residents here in Tuolton. If you don't make it through the process at Community Action, that we have some money. That's just my suggestion.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification. I appreciate that. Um, and in addition, we've heard from Republic that they're the same type of thing as PGE. I don't know if you wanna include them in this as well, but that.
These are the bills that people are getting and eventually people are gonna have to pay or work a payment plan out. And if those folks are on the edge, you know, look, maybe we can, you know, again, keep them in their homes, keep in their apartments, keep the lights on, keep the heat on.
In the air, no.
So I got a fan blowing behind me. I'm sweating like you won't believe.
Can I also ask a question about the, um,
Sure, that you and then Valerie.
Okay, just because Dawn, what you said, I'm just, if we do something through there, um, my, my thing really is about drilling down to the people in Tuolton, because I know that it's hard to get through that intake process right now, from what I understand. So, um, either, like, I, I'm just wondering if there's pieces in the, the money that we're giving them that is, um, supporting infras- you know, the intake process, um, especially for folks in Tuolton, not just the, the cash for the, um, bills, but also the help for the systems that are needing to be strengthened right now, from what I understand.
Are you referring to, uh, helping beef up staffing at Community Action, that type of?
Yeah, what they're doing, cause they were, they just had a phone intake process and then people were calling and calling and couldn't get through. And, um, so now they're trying to do something with their, with an online application process too. And, um, I know they're in the middle of it. I haven't heard that, that they've completed it yet. And, but I do know that they're having capacity issues. And so my concern is making sure that when we work with them, that we also improve functionality, whether it's somehow having something localized here or helping their system work in a way that people can be sure to access. Um, and that we have numbers that we expect from the money that we put in of Tuolton recipients getting services.
I think I saw in that pack the, from Washington County Commissioners, when they did the funding, there was a chunk of money set aside for Community Action for administrative costs, because they're becoming like the gate, well, they've always been the gatekeeper. But they're becoming a gatekeeper with additional responsibilities. And I, I remember it was a significant amount of money going to Community Action to help them.
Yeah.
Right, but what, what Bridget, I'm sorry, I intercept a little bit here, but Bridget, Councilwoman is saying is that there is a very high people calling. So by the time you reach to those, whatever help, eh, I mean, your bill, your water's cut off, your, you have no more, you're getting evicted. So maybe what we're trying to, I guess, have something here or, cause that was part of one of those meetings. And it's just, I, I told them, we need to have money for our community here, cause just we're so far east that Hillsborough, for all those other bigger cities that are closer to Community Action, where Community Action is, take up a lot of that, because it can, or it can do, so that's why we're,
Yeah.
Forget that if, that they are also full to capacity and they might not, our people might not be able to get anything.
Yeah, that's what I agree. That's why I was saying
It can be a while.
The money for stuff like that, for, I'll keep it general utilities right now, but have some money set aside for something like that, for those folks who fall through the cracks at Community Action. Other comments? Valerie?
Oh, I guess I'm, I'm hearing you, um, there's all these needs for people that we wanna help. And I'm just wondering if we could almost make it like a generic utilities, rent assistance, you know, well, any needs for people, be, like have a list of needs, but that people could just basically, if they fall into any of these categories, cause maybe they will get rent assistance, but not with utilities and they still have a need, so we could more like a block grant kind of thing, or, you know, it could be any of those needs.
I think that's, that's the devil in the details that staff might have to do, because and Tony Johnson from Off Base here, that the criteria for re- that staff might come up with for granting someone rental or mortgage assistance might be different, uh, than, uh, we'll just keep it generic, a gift card, um, or some other kind of assistance that depending on the program, might be different requirements for you to qualify. Is that, I know Jonathan's pretty good about the metrics and what people apply, having standards to meet. I could see rather having a general one, you might have to have specific requirements for each program, quote unquote, program.
Yes, Mayor, that, that is correct. A- and, and I think Sherilyn has pointed out in our conversations that not only are workers and residents, but our businesses are getting application fatigue. And so we will try to make this as user friendly as possible. Uh, because everyone is applying for every type of assistance just to survive. And so if, if we get clarity tonight on these generalized buckets, we will come back with what is applicable to the CARES Act funding, what is applicable to the county, and then what is in compliance with what your priorities are. And then, uh, if that plan is appropriate, then we can move forward.
Right. So I'll circle back then. With business assistance, it sounds like everyone's okay with that, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Uh, rental assistance.
On the business.
Looking forward for tonight.
Well, on the business assistance, could I just ask if, um, I, I heard, uh, Council Reyes say something about micro businesses? Um, is there any other kind of criteria that you're looking at for this two, um, Economic Stabilization Fund 2.0, um, before it was, um, you know, focused on, uh, we, we had some focuses, but, um, I'm just interested in if there's any kind of, um, guiding criteria.
Because, I mean, I know we, a lot of folks have talked about the folks who didn't get money in initial funding. But
Aren't there.
I remember right, it was like, wasn't it like almost $3 million Jonathan requested?
1.3.
Yeah, so 1.3, we're gonna have a little bit more, so it's still gonna be folks in that list to don't get funds. So do you go back out and open the application process again, or you just award the folks that already applied before?
I was thinking of the people that didn't, that didn't receive, applied, but they didn't get anything because we ran out of money or they submitted it late or, you know, I don't know. I think letting them, maybe, maybe have a better idea, but definitely those who applied.
Let's see, Robert first and Bridget.
Yeah, I would say reopen it, um, because some of those people or businesses that may have applied months ago are no longer around. Um, and you use it, you know, as part of the criteria, how we had earlier, you know, several, uh, qualifiers and factors used, whether or not they got, uh, a round of assistance last time, uh, from either us or the PPP as, as one of the factors. Um, I think that would be the, the fairest way to do it.
Bridget?
Similar, I just thought there might be new need, um, as well. Um, some people that might not have needed to apply before might need to apply now. And the other thing that I remember that we did was also have a lens, a D E I lens, including women and minority owned businesses and making sure that we look at that.
Thank you, that's helpful. Sorry.
That solved that one bullet?
We'll come back with some, with some parameters for it.
So then, uh, rental assistance and I asked slash mortgage assistance. Want staff to dive into that? And what specific guidance you need on that, Jonathan?
If council wants to do it, we will look at the best alternative to present to you, whether that be in-house or with a contract.
Well, I talked about childcare assistance, so do we want to have staff wait on what Washington County comes out with or? Or start looking into it? What's the preference here? Bridget and Valerie?
Um, I like the idea of the, what, what people might need for childcare assistance for work, workers. So that workaround for the user, because I don't, if we can touch all the, if the county can touch all the big businesses, then there might be a way that we can do something that's more sm- uh, micro at our level. That's, that's my curiosity. And of course, I'm fine with waiting to see what they do before we.
Okay. Valerie then Maria.
I was gonna say, it seems like we've got a limited timeframe here, so I think we should move ahead and then adjust somewhat when we see what the county has, so.
Maria?
And I actually disagree a little bit. I think we should start looking about an art, you know, do our own thing. Because the needs here are, might come up sooner than, than later. And I think that we should do our own, look at our own residents and business, businesses here who are providing childcare.
I mean, I like your idea of the voucher idea, that maybe coming up with a voucher system that for those folks who do have kids in childcare and who are struggling, that they present this voucher to the childcare facility, facility. And, you know, it decreases their costs for the month. There, but the weird thing, that good old tax system, that tax question that Robert asked about, that's infuriating that they'd have to pay taxes on it.
But even if they had to pay taxes, it's still, they're, I mean, they're able to go to work, they're able to have their kids being taken care of. And they can pay their taxes.
Yeah, that's true. Good point.
Yeah, and that's, that will be up to the, at the, you know, that's something that they will have to report or however they report. But we provide the assistance and we help them.
Okay. This is the county talking about a voucher system, but you have no details yet, Jonathan, yet?
So, they're only limited to, the only, it's 15 employees or less and a maximum revenue of $300,000. That's all I know.
The facilities that can get it or the people who can get it?
The facilities.
Whereas with, with us, we could, we know the 11 formal childcare facilities out here in town. So we could, so if somehow we came up with a voucher system that they can get compensated for taking care of the kids in the community. That would help folks who might not be incorporated into what the county's envisioning.
Yes.
That, that's what I was thinking about, providing the grant to the provider. And then the provider can promote one month of childcare to the families. And then that way, it might be a lot easier to, or filing taxes, you know, I mean. I'm sorry?
I agree with you. Does that help Jonathan on that one?
Yes.
Uh, okay, and then we also get, let's set aside money for the fall, because we never know what's gonna happen. Uh, so let's have a reserve fund. And I just have my request, my ask about the, maybe adding, adding homeless services funds to add additional capacity for the shelter here that serves our residents in the event they do have to use the services of family promise. And then figuring out some kind of gift card idea based on what Bridget's saying. Rather than just handing someone cash somehow, where we can help them through a gift card or some kind of mechanism when they, when they have that bill for food or something like that. But that's not supported, it's not supported.
Well, I, I, I'm okay with it, but I think, I think there's, like, what I hear is it's a basic needs bucket almost. That was the last bucket. And it has to do with utility bills, basic needs like food. And, but I also think that small cash assistance might be good as well for people that have medication needs, things like, just very basic needs that you and I don't necessarily think about, but is very important for people to stay stable, stay healthy. And is a very basic need.
I, I like that, I like that category. Terrific. A, a basic needs category, yeah. Does that sound okay? Getting late, people just going, yeah, yeah, yeah. Because we get a TDC meeting after this. President Grimes.
No, I, I think, I, I think I'm doing a lot of nodding, because I appreciate a lot of what people are bringing to the table as far as ideas and thoughts. My only concern in this, I'm sorry, this might be way off base, but we keep, we take it the original program that we did, and we're talking about taking that forward in another round, which I think is fantastic. And then we're adding all these sort of additional programs on. And it makes me wonder about administering this program and capacity. The business loans is one thing. And the idea of childcare assistance, basic needs, that's great. But it seems like we just keep adding so many different buckets. But while it's awesome to have the funds do that, I'm just wondering, when you're talking about, you know, gift cards for basic needs and the monies and how to discern who should and who shouldn't. And if people make application, it just seems like the, I guess, the administration of this seems like, to me, it sounds like it's starting to get into like a big monster. And I'm wondering, do we have the manpower that meets our designer to be so generous, I guess?
And that's something where you might, rather than having city staff, you know, we implement the program. And I'll pick, I'll pick on Family Promise tonight. Yeah, Family Promise implement the program. This is what they do. That, say, we do the basic needs, mortgage assistance, rental assistance, and the additional homeless services, and we approach Family Promise or an agency saying, we'd like you to administer this for us. Of course, they'll have a fee, but staff won't be doing it. And this is something that's in your warehouse that they do every day. I got the okay from Nancy. Because that's, I mean, that's like Community Action, all these not-for-profit organizations, that's what they do. They coordinate the care.
Um, if, if I could chime in for a second, that's exactly what we talked about in our initial discussions. And so part of what we will research is, do we have the capacity? How would we carry this out? So that's what, that's what we would bring back to you. Uh, Council President Grimes, I really appreciate you bringing that up.
All right. Do you have what you need, Jonathan, or you need some more clarity?
So tonight I just need two official actions. A motion to approve the contract amendment to, a motion to modify the Business Organ contract, simple motion. And then the official approval of the resolution to authorize the city manager for this contract.
I'm scrolling up. So we've got the one, we haven't got one resolution though.
So that is, we did not expect to receive such a large award from Business Organ, to be quite honest with you. We, under Counselor Morrison's suggestion, initially, we applied again, not thinking we were gonna get $242,000. I kind of assumed we were gonna get 35. So the reason we didn't have that on there is it only came in last Thursday.
Right, so.
So we're looking for you to, someone to make a motion in a second to accept that. And we will come back at, so that we can transmit that to Business Organ that, that our intention to move forward with it and we'll bring back the administrative.
From this resolution?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to.
Okay, Bridget's running with it.
I'll make a motion to accept the money from the CARES Act and the Small Business Organ.
I have a motion as second to accept the CARES money and implement our programs with it, whatever Bridget said. But a motion as second for that. Counselor Brooks?
Hi.
Counselor Pratt?
Hi.
Counselor Kellogg?
Hi.
Counselor Morrison?
Yes.
Counselor Reyes?
Yes.
Counsel President Grimes?
I.
I also, that's unanimous. But now the resolution that's here.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 5515-20.
Second.
I have a motion as second to approve Resolution number 5515-20. Counselor Brooks?
Hi.
Counselor Pratt?
Hi.
Counselor Kellogg?
Hi.
Counselor Morrison?
Yes.
Counselor Reyes?
Yes.
Counsel President Grimes?
I.
I invite, I vote I also, unanimous. All right. Uh, we had no items removed from consent. Counsel Communications, any communications? Counsel Morrison?
Real, real quick, because I, it was, it was in my notes and I just skipped over it and I apologize. I wanted to give a shout out. We've got a lot of letters on In-N-Out, some who are in favor and some who are against. But I want to give a shout out to what I would call the double cheeseburger award of the, of the season to Matthew Gillis. And for those of you who don't recognize, yeah, I don't think I, I recognize the name myself. But he's the one who included a picture and a diagram of the traffic flow and what, how that would help alleviate the traffic. And I just thought, of all the letters we've gotten, that was the best from, from a community resident. So that, that was, just wanted to acknowledge that.
All right. Anything else? Counselor Kellogg and then Counsel Pratt?
I know it was going on two and a half hours ago. But I want to pick up Mr. Stewart's comments about this ongoing saga with the marijuana facilities. And, you know, we had worked as a group earlier to raise enough hands to have this, you know, to, to be considered. Some amendments or at least discussion and public outreach. And I know COVID intervened, but as the last comment just made clear, we're, we're still functioning as a city. We're taking input on In-N-Out, we're taking input on other issues. And I just, I think it's time to, to put this issue in front of us, get all the community input we need and make a decision. I don't want the, I don't want to call it a threat, but, you know, anything looming over our heads about what may possibly happen at the Department of Revenue or in Circuit Court or, or wherever. I think it's, it's, it's time to address these concerns and, and, and make a decision.
Right. What would your suggestion be?
Well, we can't vote right now. No, I'm just kidding. You know, I, I, I don't know what staff's capacity to, to take this on right now. So I guess I would defer to Sherilyn in terms of what conversations have already happened. And then the rest of you in terms of what other conversations need to happen before you feel comfortable making a decision.
All right. So, I mean, we, we know having public meetings is impossible. We talked about having CIO meetings, but having Zoom virtual meetings anytime soon seems very difficult to do. And so I'm wondering if we just take a page out of the community development playbook and ask staff if they have the capacity to maybe do a town hall, a town meeting, a listening session, that we have a Zoom meeting somehow that residents can attend and hear presentations on what we're envisioning. And we get community feedback that way, rather than waiting for the six CIOs to get this done. I too would rather have this done now or within the next month or two, rather than dragging this out. This way, we can move on to other business and hear from the community as soon as possible. Because I think we came down to an altern- uh, an alternative we all liked that we could live with. But we wanted to have it shopped out to the communities. Maybe that's what we asked staff to do, is have, coordinate a community event virtually where we can get that feedback. And is that something, Sherilyn, you think you have the capacity for in the next, you know, month or two, or three?
Yeah, I mean, I could put my head together with Aquila and probably Megan and Betsy and talk about how to host an, you know, an online town hall, like Allah In-N-Out did. And bring that back, bring that information back to you.
To the folks. We're, we're still getting the community input we want. We're just not gonna wait for the CIOs to do, we're just gonna trigger, trigger it or initiate it ourselves, rather than waiting for the CIOs. Got a lot of pensive faces.
I agree. I think that we should go ahead and, and start getting this done and, and move forward. Show that we were working on this as well. I mean, we can't drag this too long, so I'm with that.
Is there, is there a way to make sure we reach out to the CIOs to let them know about this?
I believe they have. Come up at the council president meetings.
Okay.
The CIOs are not meeting.
I realize that. I'm just saying, make sure we.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, directly with the CIO, at least president, so they are aware of this public meeting.
Oh, yeah, because I would, I would ask the CIO presidents, anyone in the CIO leadership, that they need to get the word out. That's their role.
Yeah.
And drive attendance.
Right, that's my point. I would like to hear a good cross-section of the community.
Exactly, yep. So I've got three yeses. Counsel President Grimes?
Yeah, my concern is just, at this time, trying to get a critical mass for input is just so difficult. It's like what we were talking about with the tolling issue. I mean, getting people, getting people's attention, getting them to focus on something right now outside of the urgent, urgent, you know, financial and medical and, you know, emotional wellbeing of a family. I just think it's such a difficult time to talk about something. And the idea of sort of trying to fast-track rezoning something we already have zoned, that just doesn't seem to, I don't know, be quite attractive enough to one business that can't seem to find space to do what they want to do in a zone that we've already done and already worked on and already had community input on. I don't know. It just, to me, it doesn't really rise to the level of some of the projects we've just been discussing 10 minutes ago that I think are worthy of staff time and staff effort. And I just don't think this is one of them. And, you know, I think getting meaningful community input right now on something like that is gonna be next to impossible. And I, you know, and, and frankly, starting off a meeting, you know, with being, you know, threatened with litigation doesn't exactly make me feel like we need to bend over backwards to try to rezone something that's currently zoned that just doesn't suit with everything else we've got going on and directing staff in that direction. To me, just seems like a misappropriation of resources right now. So.
Clear or no?
That's what I think.
Paul?
Yeah, I, I just want to chime in. I don't, Mr. Stewart can say anything he wants. He's an attorney. He's, he's free to say, I'll file whatever I want. But he cannot file and say, we're not giving him an opportunity, when we've given him an opportunity. And our practices, as I have said repeatedly, have been established under best practices in states that have approved the marijuana law. And so he can set up shop. He's just not happy with where he gets to set up shop. And for that, I'm really sorry, but I've got a developer who's really unhappy that he can't set up shop in Basalt Creek because of our zoning. And he could sue, but he's not going in, I mean, he's not gonna get anywhere with it. Because you can't, it's, it's not a lawsuit that's gonna go anywhere. So again, I, I, I don't want to belabor this point. I agree with Counsel Grimes. We spent a lot, the previous council, prior to my coming on board, spent a lot of time on this issue and a lot of public outreach and a lot of, hey, let's make this all work so that everybody's happy. And, and you can read my, you can re-listen to my speech at the council meeting way back when. If you've forgotten some of the points that I made. But I don't think we, to just keep rehashing it over and over again, to me, we have so many other issues.
It's kind of funny. I'm kind of the opposite. I think, I don't know why we can't do the presentation in a council meeting instead of having a, a public meeting. And, and maybe that would help with staff time. And, and then, you know, make the decision. I'm fine with a public meeting, however, if that's what people want. I'm fine with a public meeting, however, if that's what people want. And like someone said before, I think the voters, I mean, there's I feel like there was a referendum on the ballot, so there's been a decision in the community. That's where I'm at.
And we have that.
All right, so that's, that's four. Valerie, are you, you're yes? That's five, right? You got five yes, Sherilyn.
Mayor, can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
That we actually do the, well, not us, but poor Sean over there, do the legwork on marking up the ordinance so that when we do have a public meeting, that comments can be focused on those changes and not on broader issues that that may take up a significant amount of time.
That's a good suggestion.
We'll put our heads together and let you know what we come up with in terms of a plan.
Thank you. Is that all you had, Robert?
Yes.
Or someone else had their hand up. Valerie?
Oh, I just wanted to follow up. I I haven't found a local contact for Meals on Wheels, but if you go to M O W P dot org backslash volunteer, you can go right on there and fill out a form and get directed to sign up and help with Meals on Wheels.
Anything else?
I have one other thing. I, well, and it's a, I want to invite Valerie, who is our new board president for the 12th and Police Foundation to talk about, we got an exciting donation this week, so I thought maybe she'd want to thank them.
But I don't have their names, but I know it started with Sergeant Cooper, Nate Cooper, who referred them to another sergeant who recommended to these people. Who was it, Bridget? Here's a little Tony Mil, intermission. You caught me off guard there. Anyway, the, somebody donated $2,000 to buy Tony dogs for our fundraiser, which was just an awesome thing, but it was our Sergeant Cooper referred to some, another sergeant who recommended this, so it was a great thing. And now Bridget's gonna tell you who he's wonderful for.
Why here?
Mr. Mayor, I can chime in if you'd like.
Sure.
It was a local Corvette club that has recently been established over the last couple of years. And, yeah, they donated $1,000. They bought 50 K-9 Tony dolls that they're gonna use as a fundraiser for their club in the future, and then donate those proceeds back to the K-9 program as well. So, yeah, I went to Sergeant Cooper first, to Officer French, who is K-9 Tony's handler, and then to us at the foundation and the police department.
So thank you very much, Corvette Club.
Thank you.
Thanks, too.
Okay, I guess that's it. So we have a motion to close this meeting, because we have to open another one after this.
So moved.
Second.
Yeah, motion second to close the 12th and City Council meeting of July 27th. All those favorite, just say aye.
Aye.
All right, it is now closed. Let me change my thing here. And a call to order the July 27th, 2020 meeting of the 12th and Development Commission. First point of order is public comment. Public comment is an opportunity to address the Development Commission on anything that is on tonight's agenda. Please keep your comments about three minutes. Is there anyone who would like to address the Development Commission? I think that is a no.
Or online.
Right, moving on to consent agenda. There's only one item in the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are considered routine, will be adopted by one motion unless someone that counts on the commission would like one of them removed and heard separately tonight. Tonight, we only have one item, consideration for approval of the 12th and Development Commission meeting minutes of June 22nd, 2020.
Motion to approve consent agenda is read.
Okay.
All right, I have a motion second approved to consent agenda, get through this, approve the consent agenda is read. Commissioner Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Pratt?
Aye.
Commissioner Kellogg?
Aye.
Commissioner Morrison?
Yes.
Commissioner Reyes?
Yes.
Commissioner Grimes?
Aye.
I vote aye also. Okay, moving on, item number one in general business.